Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act of Chapter 231, Public Law of 1975, this meeting was sent to the Asbury Park Press on November 7, 2022, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of November 9, 2022. All municipal clerks of the townships and the boroughs within the regional district have been duly notified, and the requirements of the postings have been met on November 7, 2022. Please join me, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free and just as all.
Mr. DeScano, do we have any changes to the executive agenda?
We have one, Mr. President. In addition to the items that were listed on the agenda that was pre-printed in advance of the meeting, the Board also discussed an exception number seven, the matter under docket number N-M-O-N-L-2968-20.
Is that all, Mr. DeScano?
Yes, that's all. I'm sorry. Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 27, the regular board meeting?
Motion, second.
Ms. Lavin, Ms. Higley.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call?
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
She's coming right back.
She's coming back. Yeah, just notice, not present.
Mr. Perici?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
We now have our superintendent's report.
Okay, Mr. Bruno, thank you. So, welcome, everyone. I'm going to defer to a couple of opening events that we'll go through first, but we have Luca DiAndrea here from Annaphen High School, who is, as we introduced the past couple of board meetings, members of the student executive cabinet. And originally, we were scheduled to be at Manalapan High School this evening. We have our conferences this evening, so just for space utilization, it didn't work out. And this was the only Thursday in November that worked for a Board of Education meeting, so we went forward with that reluctantly. But Luca had prepared his report for Manalapan High School, so we are not going to let a young man that looks that dapper go to waste. So, Luca, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sampson. Good evening, everyone. My name is Luca DiAndrea, and I'm the Superintendent Student Cabinet representative from Annaphen High School. At the October 27 Board of Education meeting, Leila introduced the ideals we believe are demonstrated within our regional district: the power of relationships, power of knowledge, and power of unity. Tonight, I'll be speaking about how these ideals are evidenced through some of the programs and opportunities at Manalapan High School. Relationships are very important to the students and staff at Manalapan. National Honor Society is one of the many opportunities for students to engage in various activities centered around relationship building. Tutoring is available for all subjects through the NHS. Many of those who take advantage of this opportunity agree that it is a beneficial way, not only to gain academic assistance, but also to get to know someone new and potentially form a relationship. Volunteer work is also heavily emphasized by the National Honor Society. Students find themselves serving at food pantries, school events, run runs, and various other places within our community. Volunteering is a rewarding experience where students are able to connect with a plethora of different people inside and outside of our school. We believe it is vital to encourage positive relationships, not only in our school, but in the larger community as well. Peer leadership motivates students to be involved with this. Just a few weeks ago, the annual trunk-or-treat was held by Manalapan's peer leaders. Seniors volunteered to decorate their cars with a theme, while middle and elementary students were invited to spend an afternoon collecting candy from the different cars and dancing with our peer leaders. Both parties had an enjoyable time with the event, but more importantly, had the chance to connect with and build relationships with a part of their community that they usually would not have. Additionally, students are invited to join their teachers whenever they need support with a particular topic in class, and teachers are more than happy to provide extra assistance to their students. The fact that our staff consistently take time before school, during lunch, and after school for us emphasizes the true passion they have for teaching and the care they have for their students. Manalapan High School encourages students to challenge themselves in all their coursework, highlighting the importance of knowledge in our lives. This may include taking AP classes, honors classes, or various electives, which are designed to cater to the specific career interests of our students. The Law Enforcement and Public Safety Magnet Program, commonly known as LEPs, is a four-year program offered at Manalapan for students with an interest in policing, firefighting, EMS, and various other types of law enforcement. The program also provides students with opportunities for real-world application. In the beginning of October, Manalapan hosted an event for LEPs students where law enforcement officers spoke with students and answered questions they had. They also interviewed the LEPs students and gave them feedback. We then encouraged our students to follow up with an email thanking the interviewer for the opportunity and their time. The students left the event better understanding how the knowledge they are taught in class can be applied to the real world and how they can best prepare themselves for a career in the field of law enforcement and public safety. Another offering at Manalapan is the Health Professions Pathway Program. This three-year program requires courses such as Healthcare Dynamics, Medical Terminology, Emergency and Clinical Care, and Anatomy and Physiology. The program is dedicated to preparing students for a future career in the health sciences. They offer a variety of volunteer opportunities with organizations in our town, such as Applewood Assisted Living Facility, Center State, and the English Town Manalapan First Aid Squad. Similarly to the Law Enforcement and Public Safety Program, the Healthcare Professions Pathway Program focuses on the importance of real-world application to everything that the students learn in class. Unity is about bringing our community together in one. We believe that in order to be at our best individually, we need to be at our best collectively as well. At Manalapan, we unify our student body in a variety of ways. MHS implemented a new club called Lead for Diversity this year, which promotes school spirit and acceptance of everyone. They have already made an impact at our school and are celebrating Kindness Week with a different theme every day this week. Manalapan's school spirit is something that we take pride in. Whether it be Spirit Days, football games, or other school events, our students always go the extra mile to represent our school. One event that showcases its avid spirit is our annual Brave BQ. Each fall, before the homecoming football game, we gather in the courtyard to enjoy food, music, and games. Students enjoy having the chance to socialize and rally our team before one of the biggest games in the season, and we love that Manalapan students feel connected to their community and are always seeking to fill our student sections loudly and proudly. The Manalapan Brave Cast, which I anchor on, is a weekly news program created with the intent to inform our students about everything taking place at Manalapan, whether it be academic or social. This program relies heavily on teamwork to ensure every broadcast is successfully produced. For those watching, we report on upcoming events for students to attend, as well as the 30-plus clubs that we offer our students. This January, Manalapan will be hosting the annual Hackathon. Designed as a creative marathon, the Hackathon provides the Freehold Regional High School District students the opportunity to engage in computer programming, application design, and other fun activities. Representatives from local technology companies, alumni, teachers, and other students will mentor participants, present application interface protocols, and provide various computer science and technology workshops throughout the Hackathon. The experience that the students get from this event is extraordinary, and it is an example of our district uniting. This entire event is organized by our Science and Engineering Magnet Program. We also know that a community benefits from feedback from its members. Recently, the Manalapan Student Government surveyed students anonymously, helping to inform us about anything they would like to see changed or questions they have about our school. We now plan to sift through those responses and determine how we can improve. Through openly accepting responses, students feel their opinions are being considered, which inspires them to continue to remain involved and feel free to lead an idea to improve something at our school. Each day, our staff and students enter the building with a common goal of improving our culture of respect at Manalapan High School. Since the beginning of the school year, our staff and students have agreed that we need to have a collective responsibility to treat others the way we want to be treated. There is an expectation that the staff treat our student body as young adults, and the students understand that there is a degree of accountability that comes with that. We soon plan to implement a means of showcasing random acts of kindness at our school. Students who are recognized for their kindness will be awarded a certificate and announced on Brave Cast. This will acknowledge the behaviors that are encouraged and expected at Manalapan High School. We want our students to know that their kindness is noticed and appreciated. In closing, the power of relationships, knowledge, and unity are central to making sure students have a great high school experience. At Manalapan High School, we actively seek to ensure these three ideals are being adequately addressed each day and every day for our students. Thank you all very much for your time and attention.
Luca, thank you. That was an excellent overview, a very comprehensive overview of a lot of the things that are taking place at Manalapan High School, and I know that that took you a lot of time, so thank you. Appreciate it. So, we're going to turn our attention to the Spooktacular Awards now. So, my only bone to pick with Spooktacular is that we had to cancel it twice in the past couple of years and go to the rain date, and I was out of state both times, because it's literally the best day of the school year. And for folks that aren't as familiar, you know, it's a day where all six high schools come together. There's an awful lot of work, and the committee members will speak momentarily, but there's an awful lot of work from folks in Freehold Borough behind the scenes to make it happen for our children. And our six high schools come together, and they paint the windows and the businesses in Freehold Borough, and it is a unique community event. It brings people out. It's an awesome opportunity to have our students interact with the larger community as well throughout the course of the day. You know, the volunteers that make it happen in Freehold are extraordinary people who give back to the school community in so many ways. And, you know, just a couple I know that, Mrs. Kane, who's here injured, which I'm sorry to hear that, Mrs. Kane, and Tony Field will speak in a moment, but, you know, a special shout-out to Federici's, who always provide the pizza for everybody, students included. And there are a lot. This is a large-scale endeavor. This is not five or eight people. This is dozens and dozens and dozens of kids, staff members, community members, coordination with the local businesses coming together. So, I'm going to introduce Barbara Kane, who's the chair of the Spooktacular Window Event, and Tony Field, who's the chair of the Halloween Spooktacular Committee. Are you ready? Okay. Tony's taking it. Okay.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Sampson. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sampson, for that warm welcome. I am the chairperson for the Freehold Spooktacular, and kind of piggybacking off what Dr. Sampson said, my family and I are new to Freehold. We moved here a little over six years ago, and we were amazed by the window painting and the amount of community that comes together. So, to be able to be a part of this committee is truly a blessing, and to have all these wonderful people in our community come together is just awesome. So, I just want to say thank you for that. We are all excited to be here again to celebrate the creativity of all the student artists. On behalf of the Freehold Halloween Spooktacular, I would like to first thank the regional board, as well as Dr. Sampson, Superintendent of Schools, for their ongoing support of the annual window painting event. Without your cooperation, not only for the window painting, but also our annual costume parade, we would not be as successful as we are. So, thank you very much for that. I would also like to thank all of the art teachers, past and present, the students for their creative endeavors and for bringing this event to our town. At this time, I would also like to thank the Spooktacular Committee, many of whom are here with us tonight. I know you don't all have to stand up, but if you can just wave. They are amazing people. Like I said, I was proud. I joined the committee last year, and I'm proud to be a part of it. I would like to say a very, very special thank you to Barbara Kane for your 30 years of, sorry, on this committee. I've only known you a couple of years, but I feel like I've known you a lifetime, and thank you for all of your hard work that you have done for this committee. Sorry. All of our committee members are truly dedicated. They work together. We start in August to do all of our events. We do the corn stocks with the ribbons. We do the Monster Mash and Jack-o'-lantern contests. We also do a double feature movie night, and last year, we brought back The Haunted Hayride. So, we had a very successful year this year, so that's what we do in town. And as you can see, we're very busy in the month of October, so we will hope you enjoy us, or will join us next year. At this time, I would like to ask Judy Guy to come to the podium, please.
Thank you, Tony. As you can tell, this is a community event, or a community event, and a lot of team effort goes into this. And I also want to thank our committee and the Board for all that they do for us throughout the year. First, I'd like to thank Michael Federici, who happens to be away and could not be here tonight. He does supply the pizzas for the students, for the teachers, for the committee, which comes to about 180 people. Like Dr. Sampson said, it's not just a handful. It's a large group, and we're truly grateful for his partnership also in this. I think the students look forward to the pizza as much as they look forward to the actual window painting day. I'm sure they can attest to that. Rebecca, the next person I'd like to thank is Rebecca Pola Castro, who is also not here. She is the district's communications and project manager. She was in town on the day of window painting, along with Annette Piazza, taking pictures. I understand there's an amazing display on the website. She also put together the slideshow for tonight, so I want to thank her for that. We have flowers for her, which will make sure it gets to her. Thank you. So, thank you, Rebecca. Annette Piazza, could you please come forward? She always hides in the back, thinks I'm going to forget about her. Yeah, the centerpiece. What can I say about Annette? Over the past 20-plus years, we've run out of adjectives to describe how much we value you. There are no words to effectively express how grateful we are for all that you do. Although we know you're employed by the regional district, during the month of October, we consider you part of our team. So, thank you for that. She goes above and beyond in so many ways, I can't count. She coordinates with the art teachers, disseminating information, and she assisted with tonight's presentation. I think she's running the slideshow in Rebecca's absence. Without her as our liaison, and I truly, truly mean this, Annette, we would struggle to get everything done in a timely fashion. So, I hope you all appreciate how great this person is and what she does behind the scenes to help us. We just could not do it without you. Thank you again for all you do.
As always, the judges had an extremely difficult task in judging this year's creativity. So, please give a big shout-out to our volunteer judges, all of whom have had a background in the arts and who take the time out of their busy day to walk the streets of the borough to select the winning scenes. Thank you, Leslie Daly, Jeff Friedman, Lynn Reich, and Tracy Vaz. Because of the difficulty in selecting the winners this year, we have four honorable mentions in addition to our first, second, and third-place winners. At this time, I would like to call Tracy Moriarity and Maureen Stumpf to announce the winners.
Starting off with the honorable mentions, we have Freehold Township High School, interim principal Dennis Philipone, principal Dr. Alicia Selsso. The painting is Slobber Up Scooby Doo. The window was at the Federici's Family Restaurant. The students are Jake Lombardo and Edward Stewart. The teachers are Marissa Alvarado, Mac, and Max Boyle. The assistant principal, art supervisor, are Dr. Shay Breidau. Attending tonight are students Lombardo, Jake Lombardo, and Edward Stewart. Would you guys please come up here? And the teachers, Marissa Alvarado and principal, assistant principal, Michael Dillon. Next, we have Marlborough High School. The principal is Dr. Dee Bleakley. The painting is Macarena: Who Knew Morticians Threw the Best Parties? The window was at the New City Food. The student is Julia Bandiera. The teacher is Lauren Fraser, Barbara Casella, and Joanna Zeller. The supervisor is Jane Goldstein. Attending today, we have the student Julia Bandiera and the teacher Lauren Fraser. Would you please come up? Thank you. Next is from Analapan High School. The principal is Sean Curry. The painting is Girl Boss. The window was at the Habitat for Humanity. The students are Lily Cronin and Sophia Park. They're not able to attend today. The teacher is Robert Andriesi and Richard Berger, also not able to attend. The art supervisor is Joseph Ikula. Here today to accept for them is Sean Curry and the principal. Next, we have Freehold High School. The principal is Dr. Loretta Ross. The painting is Oh No! The window was at the El Gave Restaurant. The student is Grace Shave and Caroline Clinton. The teachers are Daniel Finaldi and Jenny Mazada. The art supervisor is Brian Simpson. Attending tonight, we have Grace Shave and Caroline Clinton. Please come up, along with the teachers, Diana Finaldi and the supervisor, Brian Simpson. I will be doing the first, second, and third-place winners. Third place was Freehold Township High School, interim principal Dennis Philipone, principal Dr. Alicia Selsso. The painting is Welcome to Gotham. It was on the window of Envoy Mortgage. The student was Gavin Pesel. Teachers, Marissa Alvarado and Max Boyle. Assistant principal and art supervisor, Shay Breidau. Attending is Gavin Pesel, Marissa Alvarado, and principal Michael Dillon. In second place, we have Coltonak High School, principal Dr. Brian Donahue. The painting is Pennywise. The window was at Charcoal Restaurant. The students are Megan Rumsby and Madison Weg. Teachers are Lauren Haveman and Audrey Lipkind. I apologize if I am ruining everyone's name. Art supervisor is Ellen Gianakis. Attending tonight are Megan. Madison Weg. Teacher is Lauren Haveman. Okay, now, first place was Howell High School, principal Jeremy Braverman. The painting was Hannibal Lecter, which I have to say, this was my absolute favorite. The window is Coast to Mar Travel. Student was Tony Manick. Teacher is Sarah Materia, Colleen Ware. Art supervisor is Dr. Merrill Norwich. Attending are Tony Manick, principal Jeremy Braverman, and teacher Colleen Ware. Come on up.
This traveling trophy has been around a lot, but it has happened in Howell in a lot of years, so congratulations, Howell. Good job.
It goes from school to school.
I was just going to say what you said. A hundred years.
I didn't know if you were going. Okay, thank you. Before we conclude, I'd like to say thank you to Freehold Township High School administration and students for creating the amazing plaques that were handed out to each student this evening. And once again, thank you to the Board for inviting us here this evening, and most especially, thank you to the art teachers and these amazing students.
So, thank you once again to the students who, you know, when you see the artistic ability, it's absolutely spectacular, to the art teachers who take the time to help them plan that project all the way through and nurture that. You know, we value the arts here in Freehold Regional High School District, and so this night is important to us. So, thank you to our art teachers, and thank you for coming out on a late night for you already tonight. And to the Spooktacular Committee, you're what makes communities, right? This is what it's supposed to be, you know? Schools in a larger community coming together, bringing folks together, uniting people across the district, and allowing us to demonstrate some of the exceptionalism that these kids have as well to the larger community. And it's a unique opportunity for us. But we have one last thing, and I've got to thank Annette for this again, because this was her idea, but Mrs. Kane has done this for 30 years. 30 years. And I've told this story before, but the Canes were two of the first people that I met when I came here as superintendent back in 2011, and they slapped me in a car on the Halloween parade, and I didn't even know what was happening, but I was a part of it. And they made me feel so welcome. So, Mrs. Kane, we have a plaque that just says, "The Freehold Regional High School District, thank you for all your hard work transforming downtown Freehold into a festive Halloween haunt." This plaque is awarded to Barbara Kane in recognition of 30 years of dedication to the wonderful Spooktacular festivities 2022. So, this is for you, Mrs. Kane. So, we'll take a two-minute recess to let everybody clear out, but thank you once again, and we really appreciate everyone coming out this evening.
Thank you so much for your work. Thank you. Let's continue with the superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a couple other items, Mr. Bruno. We have our School Violence and Vandalism Report snapshot for Phase Two of last school year, which was January 2022 through September, through June of 2022, I'm sorry. And just, look, post-COVID, we know that, especially when we first returned to the buildings, there was certainly a dramatic increase in some of the more minor behavior from ninth graders in particular. So, we saw a sharp increase of HIBs related to language, especially with our ninth graders. You know, our overall numbers for fights and violence went down from the start of the school year to the end of the school year, so that was a good thing. What we did see actually trend up in Phase Two was the use of marijuana. And, you know, we've said this ad nauseam, that we do think that, politics aside, around the legalization of marijuana did certainly make it a little bit more accessible, and we've seen an uptick in students using that. And from January 2022 through June of 2022, across the six high schools, we had 33 HIBs of some manner. Vast majority were ninth graders, and the vast majority of that was around inappropriate language to one another. And that concludes my report, Mr. Bruno.
Thank you. Yeah, the marijuana is alarming. It's alarming. It really is. We do not have any board reports tonight. Mr. Boyce, are there any changes to the agenda?
I just would like to note that on the back table, there is an addendum that is... I just would like to note that on the back table, there is an addendum that is adding items to G3, G7, G9, all existing resolutions on the agenda.
Thank you. We are at the public participation portion of the board meeting. Mrs. Foreman? Mrs. Foreman? I don't see Mrs. Foreman. Not seeing Mrs. Foreman. We're going to go to personnel negotiations, going to go to G. May I have a motion to approve G1 through G9? That was Diane. Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Next, we're going to take Programmed Operations Building, Transportation, and Physical Plant, H1 through I1. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion, board? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. We're going to go to Educational Programs and Administration. May I have a motion to approve items J1 through K2?
Move.
Mrs. Capiello? I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. We're at Old Business. Any board members like to discuss Old Business? Old Business? New Business? I have one. Jamie Bruno, the Manalapan rep, is working very hard with the community and the soccer association with their annual food drive. I'm not quite sure how many people they feed, but I know it's this area and Middlesex, and she's even giving me some food for my church area in Lakewood.
I think it's the northeast corridor, basically.
Yeah, I think it's the entire state, too, yeah. So congratulations to Mrs. Bruno and her crew, the Manalapan Soccer League, and I know that Gordon's Corner Fire Department's very involved, so it's a busy time. It's a great thing, so thank you. Any other new business? I just wish, and I, yes.
I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the Coltsneck Junior ROTC cadets and the Howell Rebel, Howell Rebel guys, people, for, yeah, acapella group, for going to Center State and helped to celebrate Veterans Day for volunteers and staff members who are veterans. I unfortunately wasn't there, but I heard that it was wonderful, and I'm so proud. And here's another example of community, which is what it's all about. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we also, congratulations to our three board members who were re-elected last week. Mr. Parisi, Mrs. Lavin, and Mrs. Capiello. So congratulations. I voted for you. Any other new business?
Yeah, I have something.
Yes.
I just, it's not just the community, it's Manalapan High School, also a lot of their sports teams, their lacrosse team, their football team, their soccer teams, and their boys' basketball team, and their baseball team, all donated and are participants of this Thanksgiving food drive, so it's really great to see our community come together.
How many years?
It's been about 11 years, and we're feeding about 900 to 1,000 families.
Fabulous.
Yeah. So it's really great, but what's great about it is it's the community. I just kind of, I'm just there now. The kids are really coming in. It's great.
Congratulations. And thank you. Any other new business? Okay. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion to adjourn. Mrs. Lavin? I need a second.
Second.
I have a second down there, Mrs. Capiello?
Happy Thanksgiving.